Smith was in absent.
I found out later.
Live here, I need to call this meeting to order. While we will be going into executive session or closed session in just a few minutes, but first, this is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. The City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Airport Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. These items, if they're on the agenda, will be taken up at the regular meeting at seven o'clock. At this point in time, we also have, that the people who want to address the City Council at this time may do so, they will have another chance at seven o'clock. And anyone wishing to address the council is requested to complete a white card that we have on the table, or you can obtain it from the City Clerk. And for those who haven't addressed the council before, we allow individuals to speak for three minutes on the issues that they have spoken on the card, hopefully. Also, we want to point out that since this is not an agendized item, or if it is, let me rephrase that, if this is an agendized item, we request that you speak when that item comes up on the City Council. City Council then can take that testimony, consider it before they make a decision. If it's not on the agenda, the City Council is prohibited from state law from engaging in dialogue, discussion, or making any decisions. Because if it's not on the agenda, then there's probably individuals in the public who would not be here. If it's on the agenda, they would be here. And so therefore, we can't have secret meetings, we don't encourage the dialogue, we don't engage in the dialogue. However, we do offer, any individual may come at the council and speak to the City Council for a three-minute period. I have four cards. And so the first individual is Salazar John. May I come forward? Pardon? I don't think you have a choice, sir. I'm calling your name. You can pass it up or not. It's up to you. I call these.
... Last times requesting to see you, you can't even return my phone call. I represent a whole handful of people in your Victor Valley. We just want to know why the City Council won't accommodate us for our medicine. We are a state-approved collective. We file taxes, state board, federal, state. We've been audited. We're all straight. We have bookkeepers. We're not a weed store, sir. We're a collective. I've asked you numerous times to come and look at this in your opinion. You don't even have the time. These are your people that are hurting. These are people that want their meds. They own businesses. They own homes. They raise their children here. And we're going to demand to be heard one way or another. We're here, and we want to be heard, and we will keep coming back. We just want to be heard. We don't understand why you won't provide us access for our medication.
Are you finished, sir?
No. And I'd like to know why you can't accommodate us with a phone call, or even, you're supposed to be our mayor, you're supposed to be here for the people, you know? There's some other gentlemen that do quite a bit for the community here, and I came to you. This gentleman's done a lot for our community in a lot of years. This gentleman, and this gentleman, too. I research you all. I've lived here forever. I'm very disappointed the way you've treated me and my people, the people of the Victor Valley. Very disappointed in you, Mr. Cox. I have 17,000 electoral votes. I would like to talk to you. We need to sit down and talk.
Thank you. Next individual, Glenn Ayler, A-Y-L-O-R. Do we have a portable microphone?
I can manage. I can stand. Walk very well. Hi. I'm Glenn Ayler, and I live in Hisparia. I know that, being that I don't live in your city, I don't really... That's okay. Thank you so much. You know, my opinion doesn't really matter to any of you, other than I'm a part of the general population. I'm in this wheelchair because of a pharmaceutical drug that probably some of you are on. It's called Lipitor. It's a cholesterol-lowering drug. It has nasty side effects on some people. Gave me diabetes. It ate my muscles. I can't walk. I can walk a little way, but not a lot of way. The cities in this valley, and in San Bernardino County, for some reason seem to think that there's something wrong with pain-killing medication that the people of this state voted to have legally available to people who need it. Every drug that Kaiser has put me on has either debilitated me more, or created a situation for me and my family that is unlivable. I'm 52-years-old, and I have never smoked marijuana in my life, not in high school, and not now. But if in a couple of years, if I keep going through what I'm going through, that alternative ought to be available to me as compassionate leaders of the community. To deny that to me and to those people who just want to live their lives because, oh, you think they're drug addicts, or you think that it brings more crime, or that it causes more ghetto-ness in your community, the way y'all are wasting tax money going after people, that brings up more of a ghetto than some people who are actually paying taxes. That man owns a collective. He pays his taxes to Sacramento and to Washington, and then you all ought to get a part of that, too. But instead, you get that tax, and you go after tax producers. That's the problem with our country today. We have more takers than we have makers. Don't be part of the problem, be part of the solution. And I appreciate your time, being that I come from another community. You don't have to listen to me, but I'm glad that you did. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ayler. Kerry, is it Cannon, I believe? Yes. Come forward, please.
Hi. My name is Kerry Cannon. I am actually an Apple Valley resident, but I am the chapter leader of High Desert Moms for Marijuana. Moms for Marijuana is an international organization of concerned citizens who just seek to bring awareness to the cannabis plant. And I speak to many people who live in the community, many Victorville residents who do need cannabis as their medication, who have had horrible experiences with pharmaceuticals. I myself have. I almost died in hospital April 19th of this year due to, I had back surgery. The pain medication I was on, it was Dilaudid, which is nothing more than synthetic heroin, which is FDA-approved. It lowered my blood pressure to scary low levels for hours. I had five nurses on me in my room at all times, making sure I was okay. It didn't look like I was going to make it for a while there, and luckily, I pulled through. I'm a single parent. I have two kids. Their livelihood depends on me. Pharmaceuticals have taken me away from them. They have destroyed my life, destroyed my livelihood, my soul. They've put me in worse pain. I was not the stoner kid growing up. I, at one point, was actually against it before I came to learn about it. I've spent the last two and a half years doing daily research, and this is purely, truly medicine. What banning the collectives does is it doesn't really solve any problems. There's been studies that have been done that prove that it increases crime rates. And we all know Victorville has one of the highest crime rates in the state. This whole Victor Valley is really getting out of control. I've been here for a number of years. People just want safe access. We're not criminals. We're not hurting anybody. Marijuana is not making us go out and do crazy things. It's just allowing us a better quality of life, and to provide a better quality of life for our family. So we just ask that you really take this, you have guys having a unique opportunity to step up and be leaders in this medical marijuana confusion that's going on in our state right now, and to provide a model of how it should be safely regulated, and allow people to have safe access. It would be beneficial for the whole community as a whole. It would lower crime rates. And it's not a fight that really needs to be fought. It's only hurting sick people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next individual is Ramsey Naju or Nahu? Ramsey?
You know, the original banning was alcohol. The day after they passed, made drinking illegal, the next day, people were still drinking. But what it did do, it started to feed the criminal element of this country. It brought violence. It brought terrible things to the community. And those things that were created at that time from that ban still exist today and still affect us today. Now, medical marijuana was passed by the people, voted for by the people. What it needs to be is regulated properly, so it's not a nuisance to the public, it does not cause problems in a public arena, does not tempt young people and things like that. That's very understandable. But to not provide some access in a community of 400,000 people, to those people who do need it, is not proper. And I know it's done because you know there's people that have cards that maybe shouldn't have them. But what it does do, it keeps it off the streets. You are not going to force people to get their same medication illegally and improperly. And when it's legal, it's taxed, it's managed, it's controlled. When it's illegal, it is out of your control, and brings future problems that you cannot see right now, but they are there. So I ask you to think about the will of the people, and not your own personal prejudices. Because I understand we all have them. But when you're an official in a public arena, you have to look at what's good for the whole community. And I would suggest that you do that, allow a limited number of dispensaries, and so that the needs can be satisfied and yet not create a problem in the community.
Thank you. That's all the cards that I have. Council members, any comments? I don't think this is an agendized item. As I recall, the City Council cannot engage in debate on a matter that's not agendized. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
Do we have a closed-session agendized matter for all of these, for the various dispensaries? But you're not going to be able to take any direct action. There's nothing on the agenda other than...
So any action or discussion that could occur then would occur after the closed session, if in fact it does occur?
If there was reportable action on any of these items, it would be reported at the close of the closed session.
All right. In that case, we will adjourn to closed session at 5:12.
For the record, if I might, just go over the agenda items for closed session. We have 11 items on closed session. The first two, A and B, are existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. They pertain to litigation between the SEC and the City of Victorville. The case numbers and more information is provided on the agenda. Item C is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code 54957B, and it pertains to the city manager position. Items D through K all pertain to existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, and those pertain to the various ongoing litigation we have with the dispensaries. And then in addition, there is an addendum to tonight's closed session, and the addendum is a conference with legal counsel pursuant to government code 54956.9, and that is anticipated, sorry, subsection D4, and that is potential litigation. To the extent there is reportable action, we would report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately proceed in the seven o'clock meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. We will adjourn to executive session. Call the meeting to order. We can get our manager from the caucus in the back room. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to read this once again. We did this at 5:00, but there's always confusion about what the City Council, when they meet, what about all the other entities? And so, bear with me. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. So we've done an executive session, and we have convened now for the 7:00 AM meeting of the City Council and those entities. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protem McEckern?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here.
Closed session announcement by the City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We had 11 closed-session items on the agenda this evening. In addition, we had one addendum item, which was anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D4. Direction was given by unanimous vote of this council to proceed with the initiation of litigation, to the extent it is deemed necessary under the circumstances. The information regarding the parties will be detailed at such time as such litigation is initiated, if in fact it is. With respect to the other items, there is no reportable action at this time.
Right. Thank you. At this time, then, we will have the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk, did you have someone? I don't have a card here for the invocation. Is this the individual going to give the invocation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. And what is your name?
My name is Asker Wilson.
And you're from what church?
Victory Christian Center in Victorville. Thank you, sir.
After the invocation, please remain standing, and our Police Chief Sam Luccio will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to read a scripture first. It's from Psalms, Chapter 9, verse 10, and it reads, "And they that know thy name will put their trust in thee; for thou, Lord, hast not forsaking them that seek thee." Let us pray. Father God, we just thank you for this opportunity to come before your people and to lift up you. We thank you, Father, that you are our God, you are our Savior, and our hope is in you. We thank you, Father, for this council. We thank you for this opportunity to come and to present to you these things that are on the agenda. We ask for your wisdom, we ask for your understanding, and we ask for your guidance. We ask you to bless each and every member of this council. We ask you, Father God, to bless them in their homes, their finances, their families, everything that concerns their lives, Father God. We lift up to you. We thank you for their service. We thank you for their willingness to sacrifice for the citizens of this High Desert City. And we give you all the glory, honor, and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
We have a presentation to make, a military banner. I'm going to explain that we have the banner program. People who come to the council meetings and see the banners that we have here, and also the banners that we fly on the street. And so tonight, we have Staff Sergeant Brullo Fregoso, and I'm going to come down because this is an honor for me to present this banner. Bear with me one second. It's an honor for me to present this, and also, it's an honor for the City Council, and I'm representing the council in doing this, because we're so appreciative of our military people. Staff Sergeant Brullo Fregoso, if you would come up, please. I'm going to read this, because I want to make it absolutely accurate. Staff Sergeant Brullo M. Fregoso is a Victorville resident, also works as a radiology technician at the St. Joseph Health St. Mary's Hospital. Brullo received his orders to deploy to Kuwait in July of 2012, and thankfully, recently returned home to his wife and family. He's here with us tonight to share his experience with us. We will display the banner on Civic Drive for a one-year period, where it will reflect our community pride and respect for our military men here in the High Desert. On behalf of the City and Victorville City Council, I would like to thank you for your service to the country, and is this your wife and children? Have them come up. They're part of this. And if you have a few words?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Just wanted to thank everybody. I really do appreciate this. Glad to be home, and a little bit overwhelmed and nervous, but thank you all.
You're glad to have him home?
Yes.
Well, it's a great honor for us. Thank you so much. All the military people, we are honored when they serve this country. We are honored then to pay some kind of tribute to them, and it's a great honor for the council and for the city. Thank you very, very much. Wait a minute. I forgot to give you this document. This is from the city. Not only do we have the banner that we're going to, but this is just something for you that, again, states our honor for you to serve us. Thank you very much, and thank you, family. For individuals who, we ask that they fill out a card. We call on those individuals, as I have received them. We have five cards. I will call your name. You have three minutes. If there are individuals who want to speak, but other individuals are here representing the same organization or cause, or have the same thing to say, we will simply ask that they choose a representative. It appears that they have done so, since we only have five of these. And if you, the first person is Mrs. Phillips. It's on an appeal hearing for A1, so we will call that at A1. Under the public comment, we have four cards. The first one is Sarita Carr and Sally Kyle. Come to the microphone, please. Sarita, I'm sorry.
I'm Sarita Carr. This is Sally Kyle. We just have a written comment, because we wanted to make sure that we were able to touch on all of the different issues that we are concerned with. So I will start. We've lived in the Tuscan Ridge development for more than seven and a half years. It was a new development at the time we moved in. During this time, we've experienced yards overrun with weeds, trash in the street, graffiti, shopping carts, abandoned furniture, semi-trucks, neighbors parking on the yards, trash dumping on vacant lots, trash cans left out after trash day, several days after trash day, multiple yard sales, homes with six or more cars generally parking on the street permanently, many of them, weeds growing in the street, infrequent street sweeping. We regularly contact the city regarding these concerns. Ms. Kyle lives down the street from me, so we go quite often. It seems that these problems with these homes in the neighborhood occur with landlord-owned properties. And generally, they're fixed after several weeks, but there's no long-term correction. There seems to always be the same houses that are in violation over and over again. There's no long-term solution. Most recently, we've contacted the city regarding a property at 15452, and it's a house on our street, and again, the street is Ferndale, and they have multiple yard sales. These sales have been occurring pretty much every weekend since about March, April of this year, although we didn't complain until about June, because, I don't know, I always try to give people the benefit of the doubt. Apparently, these homeowners are renters, are running a business selling used furniture, generally on the weekends, and sometimes during the week with the garage door up. When we first complained to the city regarding this issue, they told me that this particular house had a permit that weekend to do that. We were also told that these sales are not in violation of code if they have a permit, number one, and number two, if they're selling used furniture. And again, I'm not talking about two or three pieces of furniture out of your house. I'm talking about a full yard and driveway full of used furniture. Anyway, after getting this explanation from the city, this was not acceptable.
You have 10 seconds.
Okay. This is a business, we think, did I take three minutes already? This is a business, and we think that it should be restricted because it's residential, and this activity should be in violation. We have other major, very major, concerns in the area, so I won't go through those since I don't have the time to do that. But my last statement is, we are tax-paying homeowners in this area, and I think we deserve better than to have to have this kind of a neighborhood. So in conclusion, we're requesting that the city take the steps to be more proactive in addressing these issues and enforcing city codes in order to maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods. And those are our concerns. Thank you very much for listening.
Next speaker for the public comment is Charles G. Boyd.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I own and run a power company. I wanted to build in the City of Victorville three power companies, but I was turned down by the California Energy Commission for Millersheim. I read your comments about the City Council and their vote for solar systems. What people, what you brought up very clear was the fact, solar systems are the most expensive systems that can be built, and wind is probably number two, and that's the reason why at the day, the average energy bill is up as much as 25% per household. And so, we wanted to build five, and we're still going back to the Energy Commission to try to build five from here to some parts of Southern California, but mostly in San Bernardino County. We hope much more success this time than we had the last time. In case you don't, I just seen on your agenda about waste, but I'm not going to get into argument, what I'm going to say is that waste to energy is the cheapest energy and the cleanest energy, next to atomic energy in the United States. There's no two energies cheaper than waste energy. What waste energy does for the city is this, it'll close your landfill. Let flat close it. If you're anybody that's familiar with the waste, they know for a fact that there is nothing produced a day that you cannot recycle. There's absolutely nothing. So there's no reason to throw anything in a landfill, because you can recycle everything, or you can use the rest of it. All your household waste, you can use that to generate. By the way, the State of California throws away enough waste in their landfills per year to create 20,000 megawatts electricity. That's enough to run every city in the State of California. And right now, if you look at California, solar and wind did not solve their problem. They have a tremendous energy shortage throughout the whole state, not just here. It's not just this part of California. It's not just this part of California. It's all over the state that they're having tremendous power company. We hope with a little bit of less bureaucratic intervention, we hope to build a total, in San Bernardino County alone, to build five of these plants. By the way, one solar, one of our plants--
You have 10 seconds, Mr.--
Okay, one more minute. It costs less than your 1.5-megawatt solar plant, where it cost.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Pastor John Harris.
Good evening to the mayor and to the public servants of the city council. I'm Reverend John Scott Harris, the very blessed pastor of the Castle Rock Christian Fellowship Church here in the High Desert. Our concern this evening is rather succinct. We are experiencing a little frustration with regards to securing our own building. Over the last two years, we've been blessed to make very serious inroads to bringing hope to the hopeless, filling the distance and the gap between the ones who don't have necessary needs for his clothing, and also, we're most noted for our Lunch on Jesus program, which to date, we've served over, without any subsidizing, 2,000 lunches to the greater High Desert area. And so we're here tonight because we have a golden opportunity extended to us to secure our permanent location where we can take these benevolent operations to another level. It's on the corner of Seventh and Victor. We have made contact with the property owner, and we are desiring to take occupancy of the building as soon as possible. My frustration is that we seem to be running into some difficulties that are putting us at a unfair disadvantage. We went down to the planning department, and we were given the wrong forms, which put us in a compromising position because it would have prevented us from coming and expediting the process with taking occupancy of the building. There was no empathy. It cost me over $475 because it's not layman language in the municipal-type language that go into the forms that you have to fill out. I was pretty much shuffled. We were put on delay, and we did talk to an individual finally, and some authority, I was, under the impression, named Scott Webb, and it was just kind of like, we'll get back to you. And so tonight, we're just asking with the olive branch that we've come up here to extend to the city. We're not asking anything far as financial subsidizing or anything like that. We're just saying, please enable us an opportunity as law-abiding citizens and God-fearing people to operate these ministries on the level that we know we're capable of, but we need you to show a sign of hospitality. So tonight, though we're sitting down, we're actually standing up, and we're saying we're knocking at the door. Will you let us come in?
Thank you, Pastor Harris. The last card that I have is Margie Simpson.
Margie Simpson, Victorville, council members, mayor, staff. I want to thank you so much for letting me speak to you, and I'm speaking to you in regards to the friendly, or the friends of the library, and I became aware and concerned about the problems that existed at the library. One thing is the vandalism. There's a lot of graffiti that goes on. I believe the glass doors are scarred with knives. There's no security, no motion cameras to catch anybody, and as you know, this library is isolated. I would like to report to you how great the summer program has gone for them, and I will at a later time. Another thing with the cameras, the security cameras, many people are leaving the library late at night. It closes at nine, and there is a possibility that some liability might be thrust on to the city because of no security, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards that I have. We have only one card, which is on an appeal hearing. I want to give a short explanation. I know some people who appear and speak to the council are a little bit frustrated that they ask questions that don't get answered, or they ask the council to do something, and we just sit here. That's because by law, we're required to. If you are on the agenda, which means that the city council have agendized a subject, staff has looked into it, they provide us with information, background, we have some knowledge of what it's about and the request, and then the individuals can speak to the council, and we know what they're talking about, we know what their request is. The public also knows what's on the agenda, and if they are for or against, they can appear and talk on that subject. Where individuals just show up, they have the right to address the council, but since it's not agendized, we have no idea whether or not it's going to be agendized later or not. And of course, those people, had they have known it was going to be on the agenda, may or may not have shown up. So if we enter into a debate or a discussion as the individuals stand here, we're actually violating the law because we're locking out and having a closed meeting or having a closed discussion on a subject that the public was not aware of, did not receive proper notice, and was unaware it was going to be discussed by the city council. However, your comments do not fall on deaf ears. Staff makes very careful notes. The city clerk makes very careful notes, and in the days after this meeting, staff will be looking into all items that are raised and notifying the council whether or not it's a staff item or a legal item, or it's been handled or it hasn't been handled, and gives the council an opportunity to determine if we want to agendize that, if it rises to the level of a public discussion, and if it does, we notify the individuals or staff is notified with the city council to handle that matter. So while we cannot respond, we can't have that debate, it doesn't fall on deaf ears. We thank you for being attentive. We thank you for staying within the three minutes. Those are all the cards we have, and now we will continue on with our council meeting. Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, if I could take the liberty, since Pastor Harris is in the audience, I just want to make sure that he received messages from Scott Webb that there's an appointment tomorrow at 1:15 in the afternoon to discover, to go over your pre-submitting information as well as discuss locations as well. So that, I know he's reached out. I don't know if maybe you missed those messages, but since you're here, it's not something we can get into a discussion, as the mayor said, but I want to make sure that you're aware that that meeting has been set for tomorrow at 1:15. If that doesn't work, please get in touch with Scott as soon as you can tomorrow to see when another appointment may be able to be made for that, but that has been set for tomorrow at 1:15.
Back location, Mr.--
In the planning department here in City Hall. You're welcome.
Thank you. We have a large number of people that are leaving, and so we'll just give a few seconds here, but thank you all for coming, and we'll proceed in just a second. Since they're being very quiet, we appreciate that. We will continue on with the agenda. The first item on the agenda is an appeal hearing, an appeal hearing concerning the planning commission's revocation of conditional use permit and business license for Teesers Sports Bar and Grill on property located at 14269 Seventh Street filed by appellant George Thanos as set forth in resolution number 13-044. Mr. City Attorney, this is an appeal hearing. I would need, is this, since this is an appeal hearing, is this a public hearing? It's an appeal hearing of the council, or is just a hearing involved those who have filed the appeal?
Typically, a hearing for those that are involved and engaged in the appeal.
Could we have a short staff report before we begin the appeal process?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris Borchardt, Acting Director of Development, is going to give a brief report.
Chris, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We would not like to go into our full presentation. We feel that the information that's provided in your packet that was presented to the planning commission is adequate. That staff report was based on a high number of service calls to the business from the police department, the severity of the service calls, which includes stabbings, shooting, and homicide, the negative impact to the community from the police department having to report to the business such a high number of times, the negative impact to surrounding businesses and property owners, which we have documented for you. And then the main impact overall is creating a nuisance and which impacts the health and safety and welfare of the entire High Desert. Would like to, staff would like to point out, as mentioned by Councilmember Vias, that the second page of your staff report, the executive summary, did contain a typo in it where Commissioner Smith is stated as being absent on July 10th. He was there. He did vote aye for the revocation in support of revoking both the conditional use permit and the business license. So if you don't have any questions, we'd like the applicant to present and be offered the opportunity to come back up and rebut any of his comments.
At this point in time, thank you, Chris. At this point in time, if the applicant would come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor Cox, city council members, city attorney. Mr. Kennedy, my name is Richard Iwanzak. I'm the attorney for the appellant in this case, and we appealed because we think that there's a procedural error in what has occurred so far. My clients have had a business license and a continual, conditional use permit since about 2006 for many years. They've invested a substantial amount of money in the business and running the property. They have a vested property right in running that business, and the city also had some concerns about the business because of some police calls. So the city planning commission was somehow given the responsibility to conduct a hearing. And, you know, I'm familiar with the city's municipal code 5.04.320, which says, before you're going to take a business license away from somebody, you have to afford them a hearing. Now constitutionally, what a hearing is, is notice of what the problem is and an opportunity to be heard and to hear the evidence. That didn't happen. The only thing that happened was we appeared in front of the planning commission. I was afforded three minutes to speak, and the planning commission issued their ruling. That is not a hearing. And perhaps the city has some reasons to take action against this business, but it just seems to me this is not the way to do it. The city planning officers presented a package of phone calls that they said were complaints and that they were serious complaints. And over a five-year period of time, those complaints totaled about 900, but I took the liberty of taking a look at a number of those complaints, and I can see that 511 of those complaints are nothing but alarm checks, bar checks, lost property checks, public service checks, towing calls, nothing at all to do with criminal activity on the premises, nothing. The other ones break down into some hit-and-run accidents, some reckless driving, drunk driving, some fights, some disturbing the peace, some drunken publics. There is, the murders that they're talking about was involving a drive-by shooting of the club owner's bouncer standing out in front of the bar. Now, he was a respected member of the, of the community. He kept the peace there. There was no altercation inside the bar, and somebody drives by and shoots him dead, and now we want to take the business license away, counting that as some sort of criminal activity on behalf of the bar. They were merely the victims. Recently, at this planning commission meeting, without any notice to me, they mentioned there were two other incidents, one involving the shooting at the bar. Well, again, it was after hours. It was like 2:30. Security was standing outside, and he heard somebody drive by shooting, just making some shooting guns. He got in, he called the police. He followed the vehicle over to a business established on Bear Valley Road. I think it's, it's a taco, Mexican taco place over there. And from there, he told the police he followed the vehicle over there. The police came there, apprehended the person who fired the weapons, and the planning commission, through the sheriff's department, indicated that that is somehow a mark against the business. I just don't, I don't understand that. They provided me the police reports from these remaining 400 calls to the area. There must be a dozen of them for drunken public that are occurring in the early morning hours, long before the business is open, involving transients who are located there at the liquor store next to the property, who happen to come over there when the business is closed and camp out behind their business. Again, that is not the responsibility of my clients to be, to make sure that people that are drunk, transients buying liquor at the liquor store are not walking in the alleyway in that area. I see tonight, an additional memo has been passed around from one of the local owners claiming that there's beer bottles broke outside on his premises and attributing that to my client. My clients do not allow beer bottles to come off the premises. Those beer bottles must be coming from the liquor store. There's no beer bottles leaving the bar, going out in the parking lot, and being thrown around, as with the litter on the property. That's also the problem of the transients who come by there. I took the liberty prior to the hearing in front of the planning commission of requesting certain information from the city, like for instance, the calls for service to other bars and businesses in the area. And so if I, can I leave this here for the city attorney or--
Yes, I've become part of the record.
--it was given to me on a disk.
Absolutely.
And I've found that several of the bars in the area have a lot of calls. The Marina Lounge has 750 calls, Ricky's 163, Karma had 684 before it closed, Thorny's only opened for a little over a year, 97 calls, LTO Pepe, 101 call, Gators, 189 calls, Jaco's, 168 calls, Johnny Finger, 67 calls. Walmart had 498 calls in one year, one year. The Mall in Victor Valley, 5,114 calls. So if the issue is we are concerned about service that the public has to spend for law enforcement going to these facilities, our facility hails in comparison to Walmart, The Mall, and several other businesses in the community. And it can't be said as it was last time in haste, walking out the door, but there's a different kind. There was two murders at Walmart. It was reported widely in the newspapers here. Person was convicted and sentenced to prison for those murders, a double homicide in the Walmart parking lot. This last month, unfortunately, there was a, 17 people arrested in front of The Mall. I mean, you can't just simply blame the owner of the land or the property for the misbehavior of citizens. I mean, it just seems to me like that is wrong. So we're saying, we've had a lot of calls to the business. Well, they are the largest nightclub. They have the highest service probably of people in the area. After Karma closed, you know, they get more of that business. Then DJs closed, and they're getting more of that business, and they've tried to get a handle on it, but the calls that we're getting and we're referring to are like, somebody broke into my car and stole my purse or my telephone. They're not the serious calls that the planning commission would, is either led to believe or themselves believes. I mean, I've looked at all the calls. I've got them here. I'm happy to answer questions about them, but over a five-year period, servicing the number of people that they serve there, it seems to me like it's not totally unreasonable. You're going to have calls whenever you serve alcohol. The entire issue, I think, got started because Richie's Diner and Denny's complained that after-hours people were coming over there and skipping out on their meals or causing trouble for their facilities, and they, on a leap of faith, say it must all be from my client's bar. Every bar in the High Desert closes-- Every bar in the high desert closes somewhere around 2:00. And after 2:00, those people are looking for a place to eat late, and Denny's is a likely stopping place for those places. There was no evidence presented at the planning commission hearing that any of those people that came in there and dined and dashed, or created a problem in those facilities, came from my client's bar, not one person. And there usually has to be some linking up of the allegations with the, with the complaint. And all I'm saying is that didn't happen, and it would be impossible to happen at a planning commission hearing with a three-minute opportunity to respond. I think the appropriate procedure is when the city manager, and I know the city manager is busy and it takes a long time to have these hearings, but it's never envisioned when it says it's going to be referred out to somebody else, envisioned that it's going to be referred out to the planning commission, and the people that are staying to lose their bar, that they've had for a business for 10 years, lose it in this, over a three-month here, a three-minute hearing. That's not ever going to be determined. I don't honestly believe that anybody's going to think that's reasonable, that that's a fair shot to any property owner. I probably have a lot to say. I don't know if there's any questions that anybody would like to ask. I mean, I brought all the material, all the police reports, I'm happy to ask your questions about that. But it seems to me like the three major complaints that we had were the owners of businesses claiming that after-hours people were coming in there, not paying for their meals, or creating some other kind of disturbance. Again, there's no evidence to link those people to my client's bar, as opposed to any other bar, or they were drinking at their home and deciding they want to come out. There's nothing to indicate that. We've received no evidence of that. There was no evidence presented at the planning commission hearing of that. The vast majority of the calls are not serious to this location. And property owners ever work can be the subject of criminal activity. It doesn't mean they're encouraging it, and that's what's happened in this case. My clients have had security, and they've been trying to take care of things. There was some allegation that nobody from the city knew that my clients were running the business again. I don't know what that is. All I can tell you is on the business, the, the application for the conditional use permit, my client signed the back of that as George Thanos, that when there was this shooting at the bar a few years ago, we received a letter from the city attorney's office. I brought a copy with me. If you would like it, maybe I should present that also.
We'll consider that you, you have submitted that. There may be questions from the council to either staff or you. Bear with us just for a minute. Members of council, do you have any questions of Mr. Iwanzak?
You said you were allowed three minutes to speak at the planning commission hearing, and I, I read the, I didn't read every word, but I reviewed the transcript of that meeting. And as I recall, the record showed that you spoke for 13 minutes or, and, and at length. My understanding was the planning commission went out of their way to give a full hearing to your argument?
It would not be unusual for me to speak longer than the allotted time, Mr. Kennedy. I apologize to that. I'm sure I've done that tonight. But still, my point is that that was not a hearing. That was not an opportunity for me to, to question any of the evidence that was presented or to present any evidence in my favor. And nobody should be forced, on pain of losing their business, an opportunity of 13 minutes or 15 minutes. It requires a hearing.
Any other questions from Mr. Kennedy?
No.
Questions from any of the council members? Okay. Thank you. We may have other questions come up. We can ask you to come back, Mr. Iwanzak. Thank you for your comments. Any questions of council members to the attorney or to staff?
Thank you. I would recommend asking if there's anybody else who wants to comment in an abundance of providing due process.
I do have one more card.
All right.
I wanted questions directly to the testimony Mr. Iwanzak has given. I want to make sure that we covered that very carefully and very, very thoroughly. I have a card from, excuse me, I have a card from Mrs. Phillips, who requested to speak on this item.
My name is Charlotte Phillips, and I own the property that immediately joins this property. And we built the building in 19, we opened it in 1980. And at that time, there was a nightclub and there was a Will's Fargo dining room, there was a big, big boy to eat in there. We never had any trouble, unless it was keeping your partners in the office. But there was never any trouble. I don't know whether there, I don't know what food is served over there, I don't know how much food is served over there. I don't know that a conditional use permit goes with straight liquor. But I can tell you, since it has been that sort of a, it's been a bad neighbor situation. I've never been over, I've never had anything to do with them. I don't think my son, who was occupying the place, had anything to say to them. We didn't want bad neighbors, but the property has run down absolutely terrible. I just can't imagine why people that drive by there don't call your city. The landscaping's dead. Now, since this has come up, I noticed that they've painted the place, but it has been just a pigsty. It had, they haven't finished the parking lot until about two weeks ago. It was covered, it's covered a lot of times in the morning. We have a guy that comes and blows our lot off. But it was covered with everything, cigarette butts, I just, I don't know whether they couldn't smoke in there, whatever, but it, it has not been a pleasant arrangement. And two years ago, I had half of that building of mine for rent, and a social welfare group wanted to come in there and put in a place where people who are recovering alcoholics or narcotic recovering could stop there for coffee or something. And they went to the planning commission, and the planning commission said that could not be allowed in that building, so it was vacant, that half, 3,000 square feet was vacant for a year and a half. Because we couldn't get a, a use permit for that. So if you can think that I feel very kindly about any chance of this conditional use permit being carried on for the kind of operation that we've had next door, I'm sorry, but I can't do it. I think it's a terrible use of that property. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no other cards. There were no questions from the appellate. I'm going to close that appeal hearing at this time, if this is okay with the attorney, and ask her if there's any comments or questions of the staff from our city council.
I didn't turn in a card, but I could pay you back on that card. One minute?
Yeah, please give your name for the record.
Normally reopen the, the hearing real quick and then close it again.
I will reopen the hearing. I'm sorry about that. I didn't say you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim Phillips, and I just want to clarify, I was the tenant in that building for a number of years, and I think the attorney's previous testimony that it definitely isn't businesses that caused the disturbance, it is people. And I think the problem is that the people that are running that business and in charge of that property are letting it run down, as, as the previous, as my mom said earlier. You know, the, the reality of the situation is, if they're going to draw the right kind of clientele in there, it's not the type of business that, that's doing it. It's the people that are running that business and running that and managing that property that are letting that happen. And being a neighbor for all those years, you know, we, we tried to be good neighbors, but even our business closed down and moved as a result of the deterioration of that area. And it's not necessarily just that property or that business. It's, it's an area-wide thing, and we need to do something about it. And if they are going to allow that type of use, a conditional use of that type in that area, in that location, then the standards have to be higher for a conditional permit if it's going to create that type of neighbor or environment. And that would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Mayor Cox, I'd give the opportunity to the appellate if they want to respond.
Yes, I'm going to give the opportunity if the appellate wants to respond to the comments. Don't see any response. Anyone else wishing to speak? I am going to close that appeal hearing, the public at this time. And now, back to, are there any questions from the council members to the staff or the city attorney? The hearing has been closed. City council has considered all the information.
If I might, just for the record, you do have a very voluminous report in front of you. You have all of the prior proceedings in front of you. Typically, in appeal hearings, you typically review the record and the decisions of the planning commission. However, you do have the ability at this point to either modify this decision, affirm the decision, or direct some other decisions. So you can consider, and you have basically latitude to do what you would please with this, with this decision-making process. You have a very complete record, and I didn't hear anything new this evening that has not been addressed in the record.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, the resolution before us is to deny the appeal, so if we are not in favor of denying the appeal, we vote no. If we're in favor of denying it, we vote yes. Am I right? That, the yes vote affirms the planning commission's decision?
A yes vote does affirm the planning commission's decision. You're absolutely correct. Well, there's no further comments. Chair's open for motion.
It would be a yes vote on the resolution.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Garcia?
Something's wrong with my mouse.
How do you vote? I'll enter it for you.
Yes.
And carries unanimously.
Resolution number 13 dash 044. As the resolution of the City Council of City of Victorville denying the appeal is unanimously The next is B1. It's a public hearing. The City Council Public Hearing called here arguments for and against the Certified Unified Program Agency, COOPA, updating fees and charges assessed forth in Resolution number 13 dash 043. Entitled a resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville establishing a schedule of fees for the administration of six specified hazardous waste and hazardous materials management regulatory programs and rescinding Resolution 7 dash 168. I'm going to open the public hearing on item B1. I have no cards. I have no one appearing to speak. I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any questions of staff? Are there any questions of staff? Does anyone have a question for staff? If not...
Yeah, I, I have a question. These are a schedule of fees, but prior to this schedule, the operation was losing $50,000 a year, so I assume these are fee increases. And, and it was a little difficult to tell from the staff report how much the increases were and if in fact they're new fees or if they're just increased fees.
As the fire chief is walking up, this is per direction at the last council meeting to increase fees in order to at least cover the costs. And I'll turn it over to the fire chief, Don, to address what fees are going up for, answer the second half of that question.
Given that, that's correct. It's a small increase to the current fee schedule to cover the loss that we were looking at. The total annual increased revenue is about $55,000. Last time the fees were raised or changed was 2007.
Thank you. Any further questions? Public hearing is closed. There's no other comments, there's no questions of staff. Chair's open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is a, another public hearing, B2, of Victorville, Victorville Water District Public Hearing called to hear arguments for and against the confirming, against confirming the assessments for unpaid water fees as set forth in Resolution number VWD dash 13 dash Public hearing is open. I have no cards, I have no one requesting to speak, no one is approaching the microphone. That public hearing is hereby closed. Questions from council members? No questions of staff? Chair's open for motion on item B2.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Do we want to see what's wrong with this or?
I was going to call to the back. I just...
Well, I think, I believe if we have a voice vote, then it's...
Yes, yes, I can enter that into the record that way as well, until we figure out what the problem is.
All right, we'll see if we can proceed temporarily. The next item is, item B3, it's a, it's a public hearing. City Council Public Hearing called here arguments for and against confirming the assessment for unpaid rubbish collection fees, sewer use fees, storm drain fees, hazardous waste fees, and/or Assembly Bill 939 recycling fees as set forth in Resolution number 13 dash 041. B3. I hereby open the public hearing. I have no cards, no one approaching the microphone to speak. I will close the public hearing. Council members, any questions of staff? No questions of staff? Chair's open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
You. Motion carries unanimously.
Item B4 is removed. Item B5, again, under the public hearing agenda. Request from staff to move Resolution number 13 040 for a meeting because a proposed streetlighting assessment district passed at the special city council meeting held July 23rd, 2013, and parcels formerly affected by Resolution 13 dash 040 will be included in the newly created streetlighting assessment district. Just a short explanation on this, please. This is, this is a resolution that had to be approved if it failed, but since it proved there's no action to take...
That's correct.
...we totally rely on the action the council previously took on the assessment district.
Because it was a, a public hearing item, we had to advertise it. And now that the, the new streetlighting assessment district passed, this is no longer required, so it can just simply be removed from the agenda.
So no discussion, no action.
That's right.
Item C is the consent calendar, item C1 through T20.
We were listening at the last meeting when you wanted more items on consent. So you'll notice that we placed items on consent calendar that are simply renewals of existing purchase orders that had multi-year renewals that were previously approved by the city council. There's nothing on here that is any new contract, any new amendment to a contract.
Unless there is a question of staff from council or council member requests one of the items be removed, one action would approve, would be for all 20 items.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
And Mr. Mayor and council, just for clarity, items D1, 2, and 3 would have been on consent except they had previously been submitted as written communications, so rather than undoing that, they simply went on to the calendar as written communications separately.
Motion carries unanimously.
Sorry, I thought you already did that.
Item D1, request city council approve amendment number 1 to consultant slash professional service provider agreement with ominous incorporated in the amount not to exceed $37,650 for the payment management program contract consisting of the inspection and collection of field data of city roads. contract consisting of the inspection and collection of field data of city roads.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item D two, request city council approve amendment number five to the annual agreement with Butzco Utility Design, Inc., exercising the last remaining option period under the agreement in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. No questions of staff? For motion?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Garcia? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, that being the last remaining option period, that means that if this service is needed in the future, it will go out?
Yes, this would go out to RFP next year.
All right. Thank you.
Item D three, request Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve an annual purchase order with Zinner Performance, Inc., for water meters with radio read capabilities for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, in an amount not to exceed nine hundred, thirty thousand dollars. Any questions of staff?
Uh, yeah. Mr. Mayor, the, this, just for clarification, this is the purchase of water meters that, that basically go into inventory. And when they're installed, we are paid for those meters by the homeowner. Am I right?
That is correct.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Garcia? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D four, I'm sorry, did I get in front of someone? Item D four, city council discussed the current status and process of burned structures and future ordinance changes to expedite action if desired. Chris Borcherd or Doug, could you, a brief explanation?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kennedy brought up this issue citing a couple of burnt homes in and around the city. And staff put together just a brief report on some of the homes that they're aware of, that have been tracking through code enforcement. That information is provided in your agenda. Looking at other potential options, any homes that are in need of being demolished, if they're within the CDBG project area, we do have an ability to, to effectuate that. It's, can be a time-consuming process. If they're outside of the CDBG project area, although we may still have options, there isn't a true funding source like there would be potentially for CDBG. Mr. Borcherd, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add to that discussion at all, or if essentially the purpose of this was to bring it to the council's attention, what we are doing, and be available to answer questions.
I think part of the report said that neighborhood stabilization funds could be used, possibly, or certainly?
Yes, it did. Yes, it did. And what we found, though, is that most of those areas are covered by CDBG already, except for two small areas. Well, we did recently locate a structure in need of work that is outside of CDBG and inside of NSP. So, we are looking into that already. So, yes, that was another one of your points, and...
I thought the report was excellent. I don't know what anyone else thought. It was really informative. My question, I guess, is, what do you think is the outer time limit on getting these things? I swear, I've driven by one on the golf course that's been burned out for ten years?
We, we tried to list when, when the structure burned. Some of these structures have burned multiple times, so it's kind of hard to figure that out. But George Duran is our code enforcement manager, and he runs this program, administrates it, and he can tell you, probably give you a better idea of why they sometimes take so long.
George Duran, welcome. Just step up to the microphone.
Thank you. Good evening.
George Duran is currently the employee of the year, just, just to remind everybody.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yes, there could be some delays for that. I'm definitely aware of that property on Riviera. As the staff report indicates, there's, in this, at least in the recent market, there was a lot of turnover, a lot of owners prying properties sight unseen, and that causes a delay for noticing. And as the agenda also indicates, there are also some constraints with the, with the code and our international property maintenance code that we use to regulate and enforce these orders.
But if you'd like to direct us, we can...
Absolutely. Yes, we are asking if, if there's a need for, if you'd like to direct us to reevaluate our particular section that addresses abatement.
It may not mean that everyone works faster, but it gives us options on...
The city council has previously discussed condition of certain neighborhoods and the city in general as a result of the large number of homes that were vacated or abandoned, people who are occupying those homes that shouldn't have been, starting, starting used car lots in the driveway of the house. And we had an individual here tonight to complain about the ongoing weekend sales that are occurring. We have more and more citizens wanting to rebuild this community and do it right. Code enforcement is a major, major portion of doing that. And the city council has gone on record as unanimously supporting that and lending assistance through the city attorney's office for the code enforcement area, code enforcement staff to start the code enforcement in a reasonable manner. But we have neglected this to the point that the citizens are, are really upset. And of course, the burned-out buildings are one portion of that. But we believe that staff can, if you need to bring something to us for more than policy or, or direction, it's worth a discussion at the council. If NSP funds can be used to expedite that, you're going to get a yes vote from me unless you point out that somehow it has to be used for another purpose, and there are some constraints. We have been short of funds. I want, I want the public to know that. We've had a difficult time in the past, but we're getting back on our feet, too. And I think the general public, and particularly those who live in those neighborhoods that have had the problems, expect the city to show leadership and start showing that we can enforce the rules and regulations and bring these neighborhoods back up to where they were. Staff is doing a great job. I see you out there doing that. You know you have the support of the city council. So, it's kind of up to staff and the city manager to work with the city attorney and bring to us whatever recommendations you need so that we can proceed with these items that, get them torn down or rehabbed or something. But we need to remove the ISOs, and they also constitute additional problems in the neighborhood. Because if the neighbors are convinced we don't care, why would they care? We have to show. I think the leadership starts with this council. They've done a great job, want to continue to do so. And so, comments from the council members?
Yeah. I, I would kind of echo those comments. I think you've heard from us enough that we want you to move in this direction. We don't want you to wait any longer. I want this proactive code enforcement plan in front of us as soon as possible. I think we budgeted for two additional code enforcement officers.
That's correct.
As a part of the budgeting process. But I, I like your last paragraph in your report here, if council directs staff to do so. I wouldn't stop here. And I, I would encourage the entire code to be looked at. And where areas where it needs to be changed, it, it should be changed. I know our city attorney has brought certain sections of our code to our attention that is outdated. So, it's probably time that the entire code is looked at. But I think you've got a council that's very supportive of that now. And Godspeed, move quickly. Do it. That's great. You will see us in the near future.
Other comments from council members?
I agree.
Yeah. And the lady tonight that spoke about her neighborhood and the condition of those properties, those are landlords. If, if the tenant is causing the problem, the landlord's got to accept that responsibility. I'm a landlord. You don't have to have trashy tenant properties. It is not necessary. Mr. Cox can intent, can attest to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Was there any action, Mr. City Manager, on this item from council?
Uh, the purpose of the item was simply for the discussion. There was potential action giving us the direction to pursue that specific code amendment. It sounds like the consensus of the council is to pursue essentially a complete overhaul of our code enforcement to make it proactive in all areas. So, that's what we will pursue, and you will see that back in the near future.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, under written communications, D five, request Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board adopts resolution number SCLA-A dash thirteen dash zero zero three, Boeing, and resolution number SCLA-A dash thirteen dash zero zero four, Part, approve the following agreements. One, Park termination agreement for hangar six seventy-eight dash two. Number two, part lease agreement for portions of hangar six seventy-eight, three. And number three, Boeing termination agreement for building seven seventeen, and for Boeing lease agreement for portion of hangar six seventy-eight. I have read this and received a partial staff explanation. Extremely important. I don't want a long explanation, but I think that for the benefit of the public, there should be a staff explanation on this. This is a very important item.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for allowing me to present the item. And before giving the overview as to the staff item in specific, I wanted to at least recognize a few individuals that really were helpful in making this transaction work the way it's been presented to you. So, to recognize from the, from the audience and, and for the benefit of the audience, to see these individuals and relate to them. We have some representatives from Pacific Aerospace Resources Technology. The CEO is Johan Clausen, and the chief operating officer is Thad Hoffmaster. They're both in the back. Also in the audience are senior managers representing Boeing, Mr. Terrence Smith from Boeing Seattle, and also Mr. Scott Brown, who I've been working with on, at the, at the ground level. He's out of Long Beach, and he's overseeing, he's the direct oversight to the AOG operation out at SCLA today. And I think I'll first introduce this item to really identify that this item is, is a collaborative effort amongst all three parties, really to achieve all of our collective goals. Ours is the airport, to grow as an international airport, to be recognized globally as an air, air facility that can accommodate maintenance, repair, overhaul, aircraft services. And at some point in time in the future, we're hoping to achieve cargo status as well. But also in this same regard, this is an example of a company like Pacific Aerospace having grown with us and having demonstrated in the short period of time that they've been here to an international audience such as Boeing and a lot of other companies, that they can succeed. And collectively, we've worked together to, to achieve those goals. Boeing has been at SCLA as far back as I can remember as two thousand and three in a number of different capacities. And over that period of time, they've had continuing and increasing reliance on our airfield to the point where, and what we're experiencing today, and I've been sharing this with you in the past, is an increasing demand for hangar space. And as Boeing and its various divisions have felt the demand for themselves to have something more for themselves as opposed to co-locating or sharing with some of the tenantsies out there, the demand for their products, for their services, has increased so greatly that it's really creating a demand for them to have their own dependency on a hangar facility that's available to them when they need it. So, with this, the item is involved, and I've put four agreements on here because they really need to be handled in companion to, to one another. But effectively, what the transactions do do is it takes a hangar facility, hangar six seventy-eight that's currently occupied and leased by Pacific Aerospace. And the hangar portion of that facility, it's about ninety thousand square feet. It's your largest hangar out there, in fact. It's large enough to accommodate an A three eighty, which is the big Airbus. But the hangar element of six seventy-eight is being subdivided to be leased specifically to Boeing, so that they can conduct a variety of aircraft-related activities, whether it's flight testing, whether it's to assist some of their capital operations, that's their leasing folks, or AOG. And AOG is what they call air on ground. And they've been largely responsible for a lot of the aircraft services related to the, to the delivery of aircraft, and I'll get into that a little bit more. But AOG is also globally looking to expand its presence and get market share in the maintenance, repair, and overhaul market for secondary aircraft. But finally, we've actually seen aircraft coming directly from Seattle. We've actually become what I would call a delivery center where to help accelerate the production and delivery of aircraft to the eventual customer. We're actually seeing brand-new aircraft coming off the Seattle lines, coming to SCLA. And from here, getting some custom work done, whether it's seats or, or modifications to the systems. That's being done here, and they're actually being delivered. We've actually delivered seven, about seven aircraft, seven eight seven Dreamliners to Qatar Airlines about three weeks ago. There was a triple seven delivered to Air Canada. And we're certainly seeing more of those coming through. So, I, I believe resulting from this relationship, you're going to see an increase in the amount of reliance upon SCLA's facilities to help accelerate Boeing's delivery of aircraft in the global market. And then I would say also, it's a huge benefit to a company like Pacific Aerospace, because Pacific Aerospace has a huge resource that benefits Boeing, and that is the labor. And Boeing and Pacific Aerospace work hand-in-hand in terms of certifying Pacific Aerospace labor so that they can actually perform a lot of the, the related work to, to the various aircraft. So, effectively, the hangar gets leased to Boeing. Pacific Aerospace and Boeing will also subdivide the related office space, both retaining large portions of the office space for six seventy-eight. And then finally, a component for us is the airport to deal with is, as Boeing Capital and the small office operations of Boeing AOG were, are currently occupying building seven one seven, those folks are actually going to move over to this hangar six seventy-eight, effectively freeing up office space for us to, to lease out, which we'll actually start working on putting on the market in the meantime. In the fiscal impact, it identifies about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of reduction, net reduction to our budgeted income. It's because we did not, at the time of the budget, know the exact nature of how this transaction was going to pan out. We weren't exactly sure if it was, in fact, going to, to work out. But a lot of that reduction has in large part directly due to having renegotiated a more favorable rate for Boeing based upon their creditworthiness and their financial standing. It also has a lot to do with the fact that one of the buildings, building seven one seven, is being released, and we'll have to replace that revenue with a new tenant, hoping to do that soon. So, with that, members of both teams of Pacific Aerospace and Boeing are here in the audience. Certainly would welcome them to offer any comments. Aside from that, I would certainly recommend approval. I'll identify to you that this is a very exciting transaction for SCLA.
Gentlemen, like to offer a comment, or do you, I guess not? At this time, there's four actions, but there's two resolutions. And reading the resolutions, I believe they cover the actions. Question to Keith or Doug or the attorney. There's really two actions to the council, isn't there? Doesn't the resolution includes the other two?
Yes, you have two resolutions, one dealing with the Park transaction, the other dealing with the Boeing transaction. As long as it's identified, you can consider them both at the same time, or you could take them separately.
Um, any questions from the city council to the staff in regard to this item?
Well, I, I can't pass up the opportunity to compliment Mr. Metzler on his handling and the folks from Boeing and Part and the efforts they've been willing to make to, to accommodate and, and make this whole thing work. And I hope all of you realize, this council is committed to important relationships, and, and we want to make sure it works as well. So, we're glad to have you, and I'm glad you were able to work this out.
Other comments, questions from council members?
I would concur with Councilmember Kennedy's comments. I think this is a great day for the city of Victorville and SCLA. The partnership that's kind of been forged out there for some time between Boeing and Part, this really memorializes that. And, and it's just great news for the, the city and the airport and, and all the jobs that will be created as a result of this, this partnership. So, I think it's a great thing.
Councilmember Vias, any comments?
Great job with everybody involved.
Councilmember Garcia?
I also said that it's, it's a great job, and thank you, Keith. You've done a wonderful
Members of the council, we, we have four actions, but they're included in the two resolutions. And because it's all tied together, resolution number SCLA-A dash thirteen dash zero zero three and resolution number SCLA-A dash thirteen zero zero four, request that they be handled at the same time in one action.
That would be appropriate.
No further questions? Chairs open for a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember...
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Mayor Cox, thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D7 underwritten, and thank you very much, by the way, for this. This is exciting, and great things are going to happen. What do I say? Things are looking up.
Things are looking up.
I've heard that once or twice.
Item D7 submitted by the city clerk, purchasing policies.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this item came up at the last council meeting for discussion, and actually, a little bit of discussion ensued regarding the spending authority given to the city manager and department heads. The purpose of this item was really to put it on the agenda for discussion purposes to see if you wanted to provide specific direction as to what you believe those authorities should be changed to. If not, we are preparing, much like the code enforcement item, we are preparing somewhat of an overhaul of our purchasing policies, and we can consider it internally at that time.
I know that this, if this is going to be comprehensive, I know that you're going to be doing a lot of research on this. My only request is, and I'm not going to speak for the whole council, my request is, once it's completed in draft form, I'd like to review it. If the council would like to have a discussion, or see it, that's up to the individual councils, or it's given to us, assuming it's going to be voluminous, I'd rather we have a council discussion on it before it's just submitted for adoption. Is that reasonable?
Yep, absolutely. We can do that.
I do.
Okay, thank you. Item number nine, I made the comment on Rosenberg's Rules of Orders that we're kind of following those now until I was reminded by the city attorney that Robert's Rules of Orders is incorporated into the Victorville municipal code, and that it governs all the procedures. And I don't want to have to go through and technically waive Robert's Rules every time we deviate, because I hardly know any public body, well, there are some, I have to admit there are some, that follow it closely. This council never has. So, Mr. Attorney, in order to get this underway, any member of the council have questions or the attorney in regard to this, now is the time to discuss it.
If I might, this is something that's being considered by hundreds of cities and public bodies. Robert's Rules of Order, which governs parliamentary procedure, is a 700-page archaic document. Just to give you an idea, this is the simplified, easy-to-use version of Robert's Rules of Order. This is Rosenberg's Rules of Order. And it gets you to the same place. It deals with all of the necessary parliamentary procedure issues that face you in terms of priority of motions, debate, whether to debate a motion or not to debate a motion, et cetera. Highly recommend your consideration of this. If you do adopt it, then there will be probably some revisions to some of the bylaws of some of the bodies that you govern, just to technically clean those items up. But again, strongly recommend it. Numerous of our other clients have adopted them, and it makes life easy and understandable.
Didn't we get a copy of these and have a chance to read them all about a month ago? Yeah, I did. I liked them.
See in that direction, then? If there's no objections, to make whatever codification changes are necessary?
Then I think it's a motion to approve proceeding. It will be in order.
All right.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Good item, D9, request Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors to approve, one, entering into a construction contract with DCS testing and equipment in the amount not to exceed $84,467.50 for emergency fire suppression system modifications, repair, and recertification for hangar number 683, and, two, approve additional appropriation in the amount of $14,467.50. Questions? Chair's open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Councilmember Garcia? Motion carries unanimously.
Item D10, request Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board to approve, one, entering into a US government lease for real property, for space at Southern California Logistics Airport, and, two, approve and additional appropriation in the amount of $58,951.20 for lease revenue.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McEckern.
There we go, Keith. We just made some of that up.
We have a few more leases, new leases coming in upcoming meetings, so we'll make it up quick.
Councilmember Garcia?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item D11, request Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board to approve, one, entering into a standard sublease agreement between 10 tanker air carrier LLC and SCLA-A to sublease portions of building 728, and, two, approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $2,000 for lease revenue.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item D12, request city council to approve land use covenants for property APN 3106-261-30 and adopt resolution number 13-045.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item E, discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. Start anywhere.
I don't have anything.
None.
I have none. Next item, there's a report from staff and our council members.
Staff has no additional reports.
Councilmember Garcia? Eckern?
None.
None.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you all know, I've been the representative to VVWR. What did he say?
I thought I was going to get through this.
No chance, no chance. I've been the rep, and I've just completed a term as chair of that board, and I want to report that the authority has had extensive discussions recently about the need for capital improvements. And as you all know, Mayor Cox is the alternative representative, alternate representative from Victorville, and he's been a great help to me with his considerable knowledge and experience in this area. Much of this recent discussion has focused on the question of financial responsibility and the development of a financial plan to accomplish these capital improvements. Resolving those questions requires that we determine what portion of the improvements are replacements of existing facilities to be paid for by existing users, and what portions are needed to provide for future growth to be paid for by future users. At this point, I believe that the authority's financial plan is unclear and is not ready for approval, and I'm not sure when it will be ready, though I think it will be fairly soon. However, I do think that there is some consensus that the portion related to existing users is somewhere in the $25 million to $30 million range. I can't guarantee that number, so don't hold me to it, and I can't provide a timeframe for when those projects will be scheduled and completed. However, I do think it's important for existing users to understand that fee increases will be needed in the future to pay for these replacements. I can't tell you when those fee increases will take effect. As to the capital needs for future development, I can tell you that as Victorville's representative on the VVWR board, I will not support any action that will cause existing users to pay for that future development. This is not only my personal belief, it's the law. So, Mr. Mayor, as you know, as I know more, I will report more to this council, and as I need direction in the future, I will ask this council to give me that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Because Mr. Kennedy is the representative counsel and I'm the alternate, we had a brief discussion. When are we going to reach the point that we bring this back to the city council, which is obviously going to require action of the city council on agreements or expenditures for future capital as well as current work? I'm not sure when that occurs, but I would personally feel very comfortable if the council was totally briefed on these items. Extremely important, extremely important for all the citizens of Victorville, Appleton, and Hesperia. I'm just not sure when that's supposed to occur. I don't attend all the meetings. I know that Sean, I believe Doug attends most of the meetings. I know the managers are meeting right now. But I think for the benefit of the rest of the council, when we reach that point that we need to have a complete presentation, we should be prepared to do that. Otherwise, either Mr. Kennedy or I are going to be asked to vote, will commit this council and the ratepayers in the city to an amount of money that hasn't been really openly and fully discussed. I'm not sure when it occurs, but I think the council should be prepared, probably in the very near future. I don't know, Doug, is...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. McLeight and I both attended a meeting yesterday at VVWR yesterday morning, going over the financial plan. I think previous to yesterday morning, there was an attempt to put an ordinance on there on a special meeting agenda that has been called for much later this month. At this point, it appears that the VVWR board Thursday morning is going to be asked to delay that because of potential changes to the financial plan. There's a lot of questions asked, and there's still quite a bit of work to be done on that plan. And the VVWR staff made very clear that until, and they understand that until the financial plan is done, is sorted out, and understood by all the parties involved, that they are not going to bring it forward. All that being said, they believe that they will be able to still bring this forward sometime in the month of September for consideration by the VVWR board. I don't think that that has been completely scheduled. I think that will be discussed at Thursday morning's VVWR meeting as far as trying to set a new schedule in place.
We'll know more after that, then.
I just think it's important for the community to know this is evolving and developing, and it's going to be important to all of us. Very important service they provide.
That concludes the report. There is no further business brought to this council. This meeting is hereby adjourned.